The Dublin City Council meeting is in order. We're going to ask Councilman Smith if he believes in the evidence.
I thank you so much for all the blessings that you bestow on us. Well, we know we've got people that are in harm's way right now dealing with the hurricane. We ask that you put your hand on them and give them cover and guide those out of harm's way if they still have time to get out, keep them safe on their travels, help them to go home and be able to pick their lives up again and just give them strength through all of that, Lord. We thank you for our city, we thank you for our citizens that helped to make Dublin what it is. I want to be mindful as leaders in the community to always have the best interest of our community at heart, our whole community, Lord. We ask that you be with us as we go through this meeting, guide our thoughts and our deeds, and in His name.
Amen.
Pledge of the witness to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is approval of the August 17th City Council meeting minutes. Do I?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the City Council meeting minutes for August 17th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Second item, approval of bills over $3,000.
Mayor Proton, I'm making motion we pay the bills.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we pay the bills. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Third item is approval of purchases over $3,000. Lance, would you?
Yes, sir. We have one purchase for your consideration. It is a hydraulic mini excavator that is used by water construction. We usually here call it a Mini-X. There are a lot of attachments, they can do a lot. These are small things. We can get into y'all's yards a lot easier without tearing your yard up. That's not like driving a big backhoe in there. So, we can get in and work and do a lot less damage when we're working and get in some really tight spaces. We've got six bids. The low bid that met all the specifications was from Yancey Brothers, the amount of $42,433. And the staff would recommend awarding the bid to Yancey Brothers.
You've heard the proposed purchase. What's the pledge of the council?
Mr. Mayor Proton, I move for approval. I'd also like to state that the budgeted amount was $57,500. We're getting a good deal here based on that number. So, I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the purchase over $3,000. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved. Item four, presentation by representatives of Dublin Team Court on recent program activities. If you would, if you would state your name and you can continue with your presentation.
My name is Kenzie Clark, and on behalf of the Dublin Lawrence County Team Court Program and all of our many volunteers, we would like to send a heartfelt thank you to our City Council for your continued support. Hello, my name is Kenzie Clark, and I am a 10th grade student at West Lawrence High School. I currently serve as an attorney in Team Court. This summer during July 13th through 16th, sixteen courts, students, myself included, represented the state of Georgia at the Florida PALS Youth Directors Conference. The theme was Back to Basics Military Training. We were each placed in separate branches of the military and attended classes throughout the day with newly found friends from Florida to California. Our sessions included topics on crime and safety, communities and services, cyberbullying, becoming a stronger person, and my favorite class, life after high school. Even though we had all of those important things we did throughout the day, because of Team Court and my experience at PALS, it has helped me to step out of my comfort zone. Not only did I meet new friends, I built stronger friendships with the teams from our program as well as we are from, and we are from different high schools and rarely see each other outside of Team Court, so it was very nice to get to know them as a closer person. Even though we had a day full of important activities and serious meetings, we even managed to squeeze in a little fun. But however, all great things must soon come to an end, at least until next year. So, thank you very much.
My name is Camisha Miles, and today I'm representing the City of Dublin Youth Council. And today I'm here to talk about my trip that I took to Germany this summer through the program named Ambassador in Sneakers. Ambassador in Sneakers is a youth leaders transatlantic summer academy for human rights. It's, we spent two weeks in the U.S. and two weeks in Germany. It consists of 12 German youth ambassadors and 12 U.S. youth ambassadors. The requirements is that you have to be in the Youth Council at least 16 through 21, and also that you have completed application. Some of the things that we, some of the cities that we went to were Atlanta, New York, that was in the U.S., and then we went into Germany, we went to Tugend in Berlin. In Atlanta, we spent, some of the stuff we did in Atlanta, we met a lot, we met a lot of politicians, a lot of human right activists, and some of the politicians that we met were John Eves, he's running for, he's running, he's one of the chairman of the Fulton County Board of Commissioners. And we also went to the Ebenezer International Worship, which is Martin Luther King Jr.'s knew, like his church, his first church, I guess, where he was born into. And we also visited the National Center for Human Rights, Civil and Human Rights. We also had lunch with Ambassador Andrew Young. And the lunching with Ambassador Andrew Young was very inspiring to me and other, my other, my other trip mates. And the way he spoke, he kind of make, he kind of like make a realization in life today. Some things he said was how he didn't even think that he would be ambassador. He thought he would be something completely different, and somehow he kind of like, he kind of did certain things and he's ambassador. So, he was kind of like, just you don't never know what you're gonna do until you do it and you never know your path, just do what you gotta do. And so, we also visited CNN tour and the state, and then in New York, we visited Statue of Liberty Ellis Island, and we also met German mission of the United Nations. And the trip was really based around human rights. We met a lot of people in the United Nations. We met one of the top Secretary General envoy of the youth, Ceciska Shalikins. And she, she's, one of the things that we learned, we learned something about fair trade. And so, during the trip, we acknowledged that and we put it through her, and so that's one of the things we're working on through the trip. And also in Germany, in Tugend, we met a lot of people. It was kind of based around Berlin Wall. And we met one of the ladies that helped a lot of people escape to the other, to the west, west Germany. And actually, what's kind of, what's kind of cool about it is that the lady that founded the program Ambassador in Sneakers, that was the person that helped her parents and her father escape to the west Berlin. So, I kind of felt that was something cool about the trip. And we also learned, really the whole trip is very educational. We spent all day in meetings, meeting politicians. They gave us words about what they did and what is different in the U.S. and what is different in Germany. In the U.S., we're very outspoken, in Germany, they're not outspoken. And their education is completely different. When speaking with the other German students, you can see that they, at an early age, learn different languages, and over here, we don't do that. So, that's something kind of different. And if you speak to them, they speak fluent English, like it's like me speaking to you guys. And so, we also went to U.S. Embassy. We met one of the top guys there. He informed us, we talked, like we were like two sitting at the same table, basically. And so, the whole trip, I feel like what I learned from the whole trip is that it's important that you know your civil rights, because especially a lot of things going on today, I feel like it's very important to know that. And also, not be closed minded when you're meeting new people from different countries, because honestly, meeting people from different countries is not that bad. And honestly, we all felt like we knew each other and spending four weeks together, we felt like family. So, I personally want to thank you guys, the Youth Council, I mean the Council, sorry. And I personally want to thank you, so thank you.
All right, the next item up is item five, discussion and action on a resolution authorizing acceptance of a Historic Preservation Fund grant contract agreement for $7,260. HPF, Historic Preservation Fund grant that will be used to complete a conditions assessment report for the North East Cemetery Mausoleum.
As you probably know, we have a mausoleum in North East Cemetery. It has been in bad shape for a long time. It's, it's a beautiful building, it's kind of centerpiece of the cemetery, but it's, needs a lot of renovation. We applied for a grant to do a study and some preliminary engineering studies on what it would take to, what kind of work needs to be done there. The, we think that study will cost us about $12,000, and we applied for it and were awarded a grant of $7,260 to go toward that, and we will pay the balance, what should be in that about $5,000, $4,800, $4,800 in that range. It depends on what the, what the final cost of it is, but we just need a motion and a vote to approve accepting the money.
Make a motion to approve, accept, submit.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve accepting the $7,260 grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It has been approved. Item six, discussion and action on award of bid to Roach Incorporated for the Marcus Street area stormwater drainage improvement project. And Lance, would you tell us more about that?
Yes, so this is a project we've been working on for some time. We applied for a CD DG grant funding for it. The folks around in that Marcus Street area have really had problems with drainage. We've gotten a lot of complaints there, water running out of the road, and it just runs in, straight into people's yards and just sits there. And it's dangerous driving because the water sits in the, in the roads too. So, we applied for and were awarded a grant of $500,000 to do drainage work in the area. We took bids, the low bid is from Roach Inc. in the amount of $913,253. We have worked with them to reduce that amount and have a change order that will reduce that total cost to $822,016.93. And what we would need to do is ask Council to approve acceptance of Roach's bid of $913,253. Contingent on it, simultaneously executing the change order. And they are, they are the low bidder. We went back and looked at all the bids, including the change order, went through all the bids to make sure we weren't, that they were still low, and they were still low if we make all those changes to all the bids.
And with us having a $500,000 grant that we need to utilize, so what's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
It's been motioned by Councilman Smith and second by Councilman Jones that we approve the, the bid for the stormwater drainage improvement project. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, that is approved. Next item, seven, discussion and action on award of bid to Dublin Construction Company for the Jackson Street Plaza parking lot project. And it's been suggested that we table the item, so I need a motion and a second to table this item.
Move to table.
Been moved in second that we table our item seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved. Item eight, discussion and action on declaration of surplus. Lance, would you give us information on that?
Yes, sir. We have two lots. The first is D-15, D-81, that's the tax map and parcel number. It's located at the corner of North Decatur and McKinley Street, and we would like you to declare that lot surplus, and then we would, the procedure we would go through is to sell it on the courthouse steps at the next sale day. The next one is a surplus lot on Tennessee Street. Same thing, it's just a vacant lot, some neighbors would like to purchase it because we can't sell it directly to anybody, but we will auction it at the next share sale. So, if you could declare both those lots surplus, we will auction that courthouse.
Make a motion, we declare the lot surplus.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Jones and second by Councilman Edwards that we approve the surplus items.
And let me, just let me put in the record, the second lot on Tennessee Street is D-15, F-230, that's tax and parcel number.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved. Item nine, discussion and action on approval of resolution to authorize local government investment pool update of wire transfer. And we are going to ask City Clerk Smith that you would kind of give us a little bit more detail.
Yes, this is, yes, Councilman, this is a, this local government investment pool update wire transfer authorization form that would be signed by myself, the data financial manager, Leslie Hodges, and the city manager, Lance, Lance.
No.
I'm sorry, Lance, I'm sorry.
Mr. Smith and Jones.
And that is, it's just for Georgia Fund One to authorize investment funds.
What's the, what's the pleasure, thank you very much. What's the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion, we authorize the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in second, it's been motioned by Councilman Jones and second by Councilman Smith that we approve the resolution for the government investment pool update and wire transfer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
Can I ask a question? I mean, that has to be done, she has to be authorized to do that.
Yes. It's basically taking Joe and putting his name off and putting Leslie.
Item ten, citizens' comments. Is there any citizens that would like to come and make comments at this time? If you would step forward, state your name and your address, and just share with us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Laura Erwin. I live at 514 Georgia Street, Dublin, Georgia, 31021. I came to say, and don't look surprised and don't look scared, I came to bring you some good news. I just came to say thank you, thank you, thank you for cleaning up that jungle behind my house. It was about two years ago, we came and requested it, and it's been a long time coming, but change has come. And I want to say thank you. I'm no longer afraid to go out my back door. Thank you so much, and keep up the good work.
Thank you very much, Ms. Erwin. Any other, if you would step forward, state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Stanley, Montana County Cassade Circle, Ward One. Got a couple concerns. I think I've talked to the City Council, my lodge, and also city manager concerning this likely about looking at building a senior citizen, appropriate senior citizen building for Dublin, Lawrence County. I know that also, in the commissioners also have to be involved in that, but you got to start somewhere. When you think about the baby boom, pay a lot of taxes, and I'm looking at basically, I'm bas-
Hold on, who I call?
But, I looked at one down the state border, basically same book kind, basically same side of County, Cameron County, very nice senior citizen, senior, I'm a senior citizen. You need, I don't think nobody got old as I am. But, when you get to the age, I'm kind of acting, I have a lot to do, but you got a lot of senior citizens that don't have anything to do, and it's boring when you don't. But if we have a nice senior citizen, the building will be good, like I say, get started. I know you got, we got TB or C spots coming up, so we already got that kind of service and money spent, but I'd like to go back, y'all can go back and look at that a little bit, and then get with maybe Commissioner Lake or somebody, and just get, get that rolling. One more item, Emmett Thomas, Arterite. It ain't Riverview, Arterite, Emmett Thomas, Arterite. It's over 50 years old, building 54, and that's a city building, and it's not being kept up, not being kept up. And I'd say I do a little sport, a thing when we say Riverview, just Emmett Thomas. So, if you look at 54 in the eighties, you look at only two forest clubs in the state of Georgia, in the Everland State of Georgia, and that was one, which is not now. Rocky was only the one. So, I'd like, if it's a grant that could be rolled or dead, I'd like, you know, approached. And on the City Council, on the senior citizen bill, you need some legwork or whatever, some ideas, I think I could help. In my livelihood, I was city manager of a big facility, and I know a lot about that, and I'd be willing to volunteer, and I play golf, and maybe one day we'll come to that. And I'd like, thank you for giving the chance to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. Do we have any other citizens that would like to make comments at this time? If no other citizens to comment, we are going to go to council comments, and we'll start with Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Proton. Thank everybody for coming. I thank Ms. Erwin and Mr. Stanley for their comments. I thank y'all for being here. To the Team Court and Youth Council Representatives, thank y'all for what you're doing, thank you for your comments, glad that your trips were worthwhile. Lastly, just, you know, we're, bad weather is swiftly approaching, and hopefully we'll stay out of harm's way, but we need to keep those that are in harm's way in our thoughts and prayers, and, you know, never been through anything like that, so, you know, just want to put, lift those people up in prayer. That's all, Mr. Mayor Proton.
Thank you. Councilman Jones?
Thank everyone for coming out. The presentation by Youth Team Court and Youth Council, very thoughtful, like to remind everyone that right now, the Youth Council and Team Court, in collaboration with other sponsors, are having a huddle for Houston Drive. And I know we've seen a lot of people with, baked with water, but we're collecting, they are collecting baby items, clothes, male and female toiletry items along with clothes to send to Houston. You make the donation upstairs, and we'll be, that will be going through the 11th, 9/11 through the 11th of this month, we'll send it off next week, have someone already in Houston, we've already made contact with, that will be accepting them and distributing them out, so your contribution will be in good hands. Also, I'd like to remind everyone about Team Court on September 23rd at 9:00 a.m. Council, we do have other people from out of town coming, a mayor from Waynesbury bringing some of his council members to look at our Team Court, and also the district circuit judge is bringing people that she wants to work with her Team Court, get it up and started. So, we may want to come and be in good attendance then, and welcome our guests to that, to that, to watch our Team Court. But other than that, as Councilman Brown says, let's pray for the ones that's in, in the way of the storm and our loved ones, and hey, hope everyone have a safe trip and be safe, and all of them.
Thank you very much. Councilman Smith?
Good deal. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Proton. I'd like to thank you, young people, for coming tonight and making presentations, but not just that, but for being involved and wanting to do more and get more involved and be leaders. It's, that's a special thing, and don't think it goes unnoticed because people do take note, and that'll make you be a stronger leader down the road too. I want to say also, Ms. Erwin, I'm glad we got that done. When you started walking to the front, that was a bad look on you. I thought you were coming up here to get on to me, some of us. But it's nice that we got that fixed, so I'm glad that that, I'm glad about that. Good comments about the Arterite and Senior Citizen Center, nice thought there. Thank everybody. Please do remember our public safety folks that are out there. We got a lot of people who are on call this weekend because there are a lot of people that are suffering and moving and will certainly need to be lifted up, so just don't, don't forget that. We're going to be fortunate here, we're probably not at any bad issues, but there are going to be a lot of people who will, and let's just remember that. Thank you for coming, thank you.
Councilman Edwards?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming, and thank Ms. Erwin for your comments, Mr. Stanley for your comments, for bringing those matters to our attention. I'd like to thank the Team Court and Youth Council for coming today. You know, you do set an example for younger students in grades too, so it's important that you do step up and take a leadership role, set a good example over there. I'd like to thank our police for our security tonight, and as has been mentioned, please be in prayer for all the backwoods who have short tempers or won't know if they have a home to go back to, on there, we need to be considerate of those folks. And pray for all the paramedics, firefighters, and all the volunteers, Red Cross. There's going to be a lot of activity going on with Dublin, Lawrence County, trying to help a bunch of folks out, and this is where everything goes smooth. That's all got.
Councilman Johnson?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. I'm impressed with the young people continuing participating in those programs. I remember when your director, Ms. Castle, was in fifth and sixth grade, she participated in projects with 4H, and Josh was in 4H. Now, one thing I need to correct, Mr. Stanley, we got five 4H centers in Georgia, we got more than one, there's five 4H centers in Georgia. I'd like to thank Ms. Erwin, Ms. Drigger, they sat on council with me years ago, over years ago, and I'd be looking, I'm looking forward to joining you all out there, I'm damn looking forward to it. And I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight and keep keeping in your prayers.
All right, thank you very much, Councilman Johnson. City Manager Jones, do you have anything that you would like to say?
No additional comments.
Attorney Powell?
No comment.
City Clerk Smith?
No comment, thank you.
Right. I would like to make a few comments. I didn't commend the Team Court and the Youth Council representative when you came up. It was intentional, intentionally from me, I wanted to comment at the end. Do want to thank Kenzie for your- Do want to thank, uh, Kenzie for your presentation regarding, uh, Team Court, and, uh, we know from your presentation that the programs that we have are very worthwhile, so you confirm that for us, and, and projects, and, uh, what you all are actually doing in our communities and giving our, uh, youth another chance, and with Councilman, uh, Jones indicating other municipalities wanting to come here to see what we are doing, that confirmed that it's very worthwhile, and it's a program that's working and, and much needed. As far as our church member, uh, for first, from First AB, Camisha Myers, we want to commend you for your presentation, uh, regarding your trip and being an ambassador, uh, ambassador for the summer, uh, and what you've shared with us, and, and being a part of Youth Council and representing yourself very well, we appreciate that very much. Want to thank, uh, Mrs. Irwin for coming up and, uh, sharing us on a success story. Uh, a lot of times, we don't get that, but we certainly appreciate that very much. Want to thank, uh, Mr. Stanley for coming up and sharing some things with us. And Lance, I would like for you to make a notation about, uh, senior citizens home and renovation, I'm talking about a good, complete renovation for the Emory Thomas Auditorium, and see if, uh, we can check with Deborah to see whether there might be a grant for that effort. But that's certainly a couple of topics that we can talk about at the retreat, and, uh, I'm almost at the end of my comments, but, uh, I'm glad, uh, Councilman Johnson mentioned Ms. Drigger. Uh, she, she looked different, like, she was much younger, I didn't really recognize. But thank you very much for coming. So if, uh, no other business, we need a motion and a second to go into executive session.
Move going to executive session?
Been motion by, second, is there a second?
Second.
Been motion by Councilman, uh, Jones and second by Councilman Johnson that we go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, we are going to, uh, adjourn this meeting right now, just to go in executive session, but after that, we have to reopen the meeting, and then we, uh, have our final adjournment. The meeting is officially adjourned.